For once.
Yeah, just in time for you leaving.
It's taken five years of practice.
All right, welcome, ladies and gentlemen. We opened the meeting at six o'clock and we had a non-public session which has just ended. So now we will begin our regularly scheduled meeting, and I would like to start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first item we have to do is a review of items for consent. We have the minutes of June 8th, we have accounts payable manifest of thirty-nine thousand, one dollar and seventy-nine cents, we have the payroll manifest of forty-six thousand, two hundred and seventy-nine dollars and sixty-one cents, we have the abatement application denial for map five lots two sixty-one through two sixty-seven, we have a land use change tax warrant for map three lot six, we have a timber tax levy for map nine lot two, we have appointment of Brian Schofield as deputy forest fire warren, warden, my apologies, we have an Eagle Scout fundraiser at the solid waste facility, and we have conversion of minute taker position to a on-call employee. Do I have any items of consent that anybody wishes to remove?
Mr. Chairman, I'll move that we approve the items for consent.
I have motion by Mr. Lemire. Do I have a second?
Second.
And a second by Mr. Bork. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, all those abstain. Motion carries, five zero zero. So next, we have requests for items for other business. Does anybody have items for other business?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to, if Selectmen Bork has information that could update us on any meetings that have happened on that water system. I don't know if there's anything that has or hasn't, but...
Yeah, we can touch base.
Yeah.
Okay. Is there anything else? Hearing none. Public input will happen no earlier than seven, since we didn't start our meeting till six-thirty, so we'll go into the administrative report. Jason, new business. Something about town administrator transition?
Something about town administrator, so...
Do we have one of those? We still do.
You still do. You still have one yet, and yeah, and I have not actually formally given you any notice. Background on this, I mean, obviously you guys all know. Williamstown Board of Selectmen offered me the position two Fridays ago. Their board is meeting later tonight to approve contract. I have no reason to expect anything awry with that, but that's why I haven't given my notice officially here yet.
Mm-hmm.
You know, and just, just since, you know, anybody who may or not have the context for all of this, Williamstown has always been a place of interest to me. It's where I went to college, you know, and I tell the story. I told you, I told you when you hired me, Steve. I remember standing out in that hallway saying, you know, you have to worry when the vacancy comes up in Williamstown, Massachusetts, in Healdsburg, California. So, so for me, this is really that opportunity to be that place. It's not about leaving Litchfield. Board has been great to work with, staff is wonderful, community's been very good to work with. It's purely, this is a place, an opportunity for me to go back to a place I want to live, so, lest it get confused some other way. That said, with all of this most likely in place, I wanted to make sure we could have a conversation about where we go next. As you know, my contract has a sixty-day notice in it. I've kind of pushed that envelope a little bit further. I have told Williamstown that my first available date for them would be August 31st, so that gets us a little bit past the sixty days and basically gets us through the whole summer here. You do have several options for proceeding. The last time you worked with LGC and their Personnel Services, you know, that option no longer exists with the unraveling of LGC. There are several New Hampshire-based consulting firms that could manage your process end-to-end. I've heard informally from a couple of them offering, you know, if they, if there is interest. Also would suggest that given you have a reasonable amount of time with me on-site, I think there's a good opportunity to handle the lion's share of this in-house. You know, last time, this was new as a town administrator. This is somewhat less new. You know, I think there's probably a clearer sense of what, you all have a better sense of what to expect, what you may or may not be looking for going forward. I've, I put together kind of a general process that if we were to do it in-house that I would recommend. Agree to a job posting, publish on the New Hampshire Municipal Management Association and HMA website. I'm making an assumption here that your target are really New Hampshire local government professionals. You're not going to be doing a national recruitment. You're probably going to be looking for people who have New Hampshire local government experience. Close twenty days after posting. I'll share those materials with the board, offer recommendations of up to five top candidates. You finalize your top group. Those candidates are invited to provide an essay, response, and references. Reply within seven days. Consider an initial call to a reference to gain some background on style and approach. I think that was something in, you know, Steve had that call ironically in the process I just went through. One of the things that was very interesting is they called Steve and asked a lot about style and approach before they even put me in the pool. Then, board, board reviews written responses, initial reference feedback confirms onsite interview candidates. You schedule those onsite interviews. Unlike, unlike the approach you took last time, which I think made sense at the time because you were in transition, I would recommend a multiple-panel approach. You have the board, I mean, ultimately, this is your decision. I would suggest strongly that you seek input from staff because you need to figure out sta, you need to figure out style and fit. And I throw out a possibility, I've seen other places in New Hampshire as well use a review board, a review, another review panel of other board and committee members to provide some guidance back to Board of Selectmen. You know, part of this ultimately is this person is your employee, but this person also is serving the community, so the greater ownership the community has in that decision worth thinking about. The board would review feedback from other panels, throw in interviews, selects a recommended candidate, we do the full reference check for that candidate, you prepare a conditional offer, you do the full background check. Ironically, that's one of the things that with the LGC personnel disappearing, we used to be able to get like soup to nuts from them, so we'll have to check with our other relationships to figure out how we get a soup to nuts. Not a hard thing, but just, I've made a stab at a job description that I've provided, and I attached the original job description below as well. I don't see a huge reason that that needs to be changed, or it seems to be fairly consistent with what the responsibilities of the job are. So, it's a lot to think about. Given you, I said, give me a few options. Do it in-house, or alternatively, I'm happy to pull in some of the companies that offer kind of the turnkey operations and schedule them for a visit with the board, and you can look at their approach and their cost.
What's the board have for feelings so far?
I, I think the approach is fine. I think Jason's knowledge of the town, knowledge of the employees, what we've been doing, how we got to where we are today, the style, his, that knowledge has helped us build, you know, to narrow it down to those qualified candidates.
I agree with you.
I agree. I think we can be, do it in-house and start right away and utilize Jason's talents to, you know, get the process moving.
This will give him something to do.
But he's got, let's, let's not forget, he's got plenty to do, because he's got, he's got to make sure all the things are documented, which they are, but updated and...
I mean, that's why I wanted to show you this. I mean, this is not heavily time-intensive for me on the front, and that's why I wanted to lay that out that way.
Jason and I had had this conversation about how we could try to get this process going forward. I was highly recommending that Jason do this process, and we came up with, originally Jason talked about thirty days for posting, and I said twenty. I, I don't think that we need...
No, you said ten. I, I, that's how I ended up at twenty.
I said fourteen. You said thirty. So...
Yeah, I gave in a little.
To be honest with you, twenty's actually tight.
Do you really? Why would you think that?
Because if somebody's on vacation, this is the summer, people do take vacation. If somebody's on vacation, spends ten days away or something like that, who may be a good candidate, comes back and all of a sudden sees it, they're really pushing the, pushing the window right there.
My interest is more or less in just trying to move it forward, trying to get the brunt of the work done while Jason was here at the least, if not to have someone committed before Jason was gone.
Well, if we start now, twenty days, twenty days puts us back to second week in July.
Yeah.
I mean, we could...
I, I just know from experience that even when I was on vacation, I'd always check the website, okay? And there isn't, I don't think there's a manager in New Hampshire that doesn't do that, so I'm not concerned at somebody not seeing it and only having a limited amount of time, someone that's qualified.
Again, and if somebody's interested, or you're not happy with the caliber of the pool after the twenty days, you revisit it from there. I want to jump to one more thing in that context, just as some more food for thought. I shared with you another post, and you'll see it, it's under Town Administrator Services. And this is an alternate approach, one that I would suggest you may want to keep in mind, and may be a, may be a fit depending on where, where things evolve. You would have the services of a recent Masters of Public Administration graduate who's backed by a seasoned mentor. That mentor is also available for services to the town as needed. It's an interesting approach, given kind of what we've spent a lot of time putting in place over the past five years. A lot of the things we have just require somebody with that execution with the systems and to sustain those operations. It also provides, provides a seasoned safety net, a seasoned professional's a safety net for both the employee and the town. You've kind of had, you know, part of what you had in me was the seasoning of fifteen years of doing this, and that probably was what you needed in that initial transition to this. You may not need that depth of knowledge there. I shared the background that I received. This pro, this program is managed through municipal resources, and yes, to all the conspiracy theorists watching, I did used to work for MRI. The last contract I had with them was about six or seven years ago. So, now ironically, I mean, my start in this, there was not a formal program at the point, but I mean, I got my start when I was Assistant Manager in Littleton, working with Don Jutton, who was serving as manager in Littleton through MRI. And, you know, those of you who've been around a while know, when you were dealing with your financial challenges here, you had Carol Coppola working for you. I learned financial operations from Carol. So I had that opportunity. Don's provided an outline of some sample agreements that they have, particularly for New Durham, the likely candidate that they'd recommend. Totally different approach.
No, that, that substituting advertising...
No.
Or is that if we were happy with the results of the process?
I would, I would say that you, you consider both approaches kind of concurrently. I would suggest that it's probably worthwhile if there's some shred of interest in pursuing this idea. Invite Don to come to another future meeting, talk to him about that as an option, and then you can kind of have that in your back pocket going forward. You know, I mean, you, you know, you know, Brent, there aren't a lot of us in this state.
No.
So, you know, I'm not sure what you will find in the overall pool. I mean, you're, you know, you're not realistically going to be recruiting somebody from Iowa here. Well, you could, but I think it would be a horrible fit, you know?
You don't like Iowa?
Okay, well, you know, the piece, I mean, I, I think one of the things that you generally are looking to the administrator for here is a knowledge of how New Hampshire, New Hampshire law, New Hampshire government works. So I think that, to me, is one of the strengths you're looking for in your next candidate. So I'd say if you, if you have any shred of interest in this, you kind of have this conversation, kick it around a little bit, and then keep it in your back pocket.
Initially, when Jason had sent me this and we talked about it, my initial reaction was no way. And truthfully, by the middle of the next day, I thought and said, well, if we put the job out and we don't get what we're looking for as applicants, maybe this is a good way. So that was the way I looked at it. I would still want to, I would still want to post the job. I would still want to receive applications for a town administrator. You know what I'm saying? But if for some reason, the pool is not what we were hoping... But like Jason said, we could even, we could even invite them in for the next meeting while we're accepting applications, and just entertain this as another option. I just think if we're going to do that, I'd like to bring him in sooner than later, just so that we know, we're not, basically still, we're not waiting.
Of course, that also, option two requires another fee, another fee schedule.
Right, I mean, basically, you, the way that this works, and if you look at the, the sample contract for New Durham that's in there, I mean, basically, you are contracting with MRI for administrator services.
Right.
So you're getting the full-time administrator, plus you're getting this ad of the four hours per, what was it, four hours per week, or whatever the, you get that bucket of senior hours as well. And those senior hours are available to mentor the administrator, but, you know, if, if those hours aren't being used, those hours are also available for you all to turn on another project. So, you know, in terms of your budget line, you would move your administrator pay from like a one-ten salary line down to like a three, down like in the three hundreds, you'd be paying consulting fee.
There's, of course, a couple problems with this, and one of the problems is only at the time that Jason, if he leaves, and I'm saying if he leaves, because we have no resignation, then we end up in a situation, if we hire somebody like this, where we're double booking salaries. We're going to have to pay a quote junior administrator plus a senior administrator mentoring fees into this whole system if Jason's still here at the time. If Jason has left, then of course, there is no double booking of the cost there. Second issue that you're going to have, I think if you read the contract, I would hazard a guess that if you hire an individual who is provided by MRI, that there is going to be a fee associated with that, an additional fee above and beyond salaries. Usually, in my industrial experience, what I've seen is that fee could be as much as six months or a year worth of salary that has to get paid, depending upon, depending upon the individual.
That'd be a hefty price to pay, wouldn't it?
Yeah.
That's if you, that's if you were to convert it from a contract back to an employee.
If you convert it from a contractor to a, an employee hired by the town of Litchfield, that's correct.
That may be true. I mean, I would also say that, one, those are the things, that's why the sample agreements are there. Those types of provisions are not in these contracts. And again, I think that's also something you explore if you have the conversation. The type, and that's why the sample contract was there. I mean, it basically, you're paying a flat fee of a certain amount of services per month, you know? To their credit, they do business in New Hampshire, and so, and they know New Hampshire government. So doing something that is wildly uncomfortable for New Hampshire local government is really not in their best business interest, or the shortest way to have a very short-lived business. So...
Couldn't we begin the process immediately and then think about this and discuss this concurrently?
That's what you're suggesting, right?
You know, maybe, you know, get more information, find out what would be involved in the price. But in the interim, start the clock, start the process immediately with Jason, in-house.
So in other words, post the ad.
Right.
Barring the fact that Jason gives a notice. Or, or anyway.
Or anyway, just...
Well, no, no.
Just do it anyway.
No, no.
Have, have him be in charge of hiring somebody to replace him. Upon receipt of Mr. Hoake's resignation, then I would recommend that we start the process immediately, in-house, according to his recommendation.
Is that a motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion.
Let's, let's hold on for a second. How does everybody else feel? I know that, we know how Brent feels. Kevin had said he agreed.
Yeah, I already said I agreed.
Yep. Frank?
In terms of bringing somebody in?
Yeah, in terms of this option, posting the job, the whole, what's your thoughts?
I think we should just move ahead with posting the job. I would not bring anybody in right now.
Right, well, that's what my motion is, to move...
You're going to have to clean that motion up.
Well, where did you?
I didn't...
Well, you told me, hold on, there's no real motion on the table.
Right.
I, I never, I said that we could discuss it further.
Right.
I didn't say anything about bringing anybody in.
Take it as two motions, then.
So, so, okay. So, do I have a motion to go forward?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we, as a board, authorize the town administrator, upon receipt of his resignation, if it is forthcoming, to proceed immediately with in-house, the in-house process to advertise and solicit interest in replacing his position. And concurrently, if we discuss option two, add another date, but not, not act on option two at this point.
Okay, so I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. So the question I have is, are we moving forward with the ad that he has in here?
Well, as long as he changes the date.
Yeah, change the date, though, would you?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. That was built on the bones of the old finance ad.
They're ossified.
Okay. Do we have any other discussion about this motion? Nothing? Question I have is this, how long are we going to put it out for?
Twenty days.
Twenty days is the outline.
How long would it take you to get it posted? I mean, this, where you're going to post this, this could be a day, right?
It, it should be up within a day or two at the Municipal Association.
Twenty days from the day he...
Yeah, and, and it requires hitting send to send it to the manager's listserv, so, you know, really quick. And, and again, that, you know, I want to be clear that that, I'm, I'm picking those two because I think that's your target. And hopefully, you will get a smaller pool, but you'll get an accurate pool. Putting it all over the world, you'll get a lot of stuff you have to sift through of people that probably aren't the right fit for what you really need. So that's why I'm really narrowly targeting it that way. You know, to my friends in newspapers watching, I'm not sure that somebody who is in this profession is primarily looking for their next job in the classifieds of a newspaper. We've kind of moved past that.
All right, so the question I have is this, okay? Twenty days, let's say it's Wednesday that this was posted. Twenty days is going to be the fourteenth. Do we want to just carry it to the seventeenth of July, which is the Friday?
I would.
Sure.
Just carry it to that Friday.
That way, there, it's a couple extra days?
Well, just good.
Would everybody agree with that?
Close at the end of the week.
Yep. So I'd like to make an amendment to the motion that the job will be posted until July seventeenth.
Second.
Amendment and a second, any discussion on the amendment? Hearing none. All those in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, all those abstain. The amendment passes, five zero zero. So now we have an amended main motion. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Call us to a vote. All those in favor of the amended main motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, all those abstain. Motion carries, five zero zero. So as far as option two, we'll see where the, where we go. At this time, we don't have any interest in doing anything with it, correct?
We can discuss it further.
Would you like to discuss it further?
No, no, next meeting or something.
Okay.
Not tonight.
So, with those timetables, I guess what I would say is that for our next meeting, I will flesh out the things that, in greater detail and timeframe, about what comes next after those applications come in.
Yep.
Because obviously, we will still be in that window, and that way, we can figure out which of my approaches, yes, you like, or no, we don't want any of those, kind of thing, at that point.
Yep.
If that works. And as you look at that sort of framework, if there's something that, as you have had a chance to review and think about, if you feel there's something that should be added to that, or a different tack, by all means, let me know.
Okay. Anybody have any other discussion, questions, comments about the administrative transition? Hearing none. Let's move forward. Library requests for supplemental appropriation.
Want to do public input for a moment first?
Oh, okay. So I'm going to open the floor to public input at seven oh one. There's no public to give us input. It's now seven oh two. I'm going to close public input. And now we'll go to Jason with the library request for supplemental appropriation.
Right. We received a request from the library to cover the incremental added cost of coverage during a planned employee medical leave. The majority of their cost for covering the staffing need, of course, happens during the summer, which is the library's busiest season. The majority of that cost is going to be offset by the expected weeks of unpaid leave. However, when they calculate out all of that, they have a shortfall of nineteen-hundred-and-fifteen dollars between the staffing needs they have covering those and the savings. Unfortunately, the library doesn't have the provision for this coverage built into their regular budget. You know, like, when we have a police officer out, we handle the coverage within that umbrella through using a little bit of part-time or overtime. Their request is that the Board of Selectmen set aside this amount, and if the library is unable to cover this unexpected cost through other cost savings through the year, they request it late in the year as a supplemental appropriation. You'll recall, we offered them the same approach for potential health care, health insurance coverage needs if something arose during the year after budgets were finalized. This was sort of one of those ways so the library didn't have to annually include some cushion or provision for unanticipated in their budget.
So if we don't approve this, they have to basically just cut work out?
They have to slash something else to try to find that space.
Mr. Chairman, if I understand this correctly, they're asking us to, to set aside nineteen-hundred-and-fifteen dollars somehow, set aside, so that they can see if they can deal with this in their own budget. And at that point in the future, if they can't deal with it in their budget, then they come and have us hit it. And what I'm hearing is that if we don't do that, they're going to have to cut back hours. That makes no sense to me. The bottom line on it is, they should basically deal with that in their budget. If they can't deal with that in their budget, then it becomes an overspend on their part, and it, and it affects the town budget just as way any department overspend would be.
No, no, they can't have an overspend. When we started...
Then they'd have to deal with it in their budget.
When we started handling the library not within the town budget, in the old days, it used to be buried in the town budget as another department, which is not the way that libraries are supposed to run. So when we transitioned to doing the library appropriation as the fixed amount that goes in four checks a year, and their books are entirely separate, now we see this type of thing. In the old days, it would just be commingled, and you would never notice it. They do not have that cushion to deal, deal with the on-the-fly staffing things like this. Their request, based on the guidance that the board gave them a couple of years ago on health insurance issue, was if something comes up during the year, ask, that is unusual, ask us, and, you know, ask here so that provision can be made, so you're not surprised at the eleventh hour. But if the right circumstances come up, that they don't need all of that, they will not need all of, you know, they won't, they won't ask for, they're not asking for the check now.
I just don't see us as needing to take any action on this.
No, I think it's way too early. I think in November or something. At, at least, they... Uh, at, at least they documented it. At least they put it on the radars, so. I don't feel setting aside nineteen hundred dollars, uh, I, I don't wanna set that money aside now. I think it, it, it's way too early in the process. And I, I think in November, they should, um, take another look at their budget and see if they can absorb it. And if they find out at that point that they really have an issue because of some other problem that they had during the year, certainly come back and see us, come and, and at that point, um, you know, take a look at it. I think right now, I, I wouldn't vote to set aside money right now and just put it in limbo, um, out of the total town budget.
Good, I, I think the intention here is to give everybody that information. They don't have a lot of flexibility. So, if you suddenly decide in November, your direction is tough, go find it, that space may not be there.
Yeah.
You know, if you think in orders, orders of magnitude between their budget and our budget. You know, it's the same challenge we have if something large and unexpected comes up in December. Our ability to maneuver to fix it is a little different than our ability in June. So, to their credit, they wanna make sure it's on everybody's radar screen, so there's not a surprise at the eleventh hour.
And I agree with, with you on that. I agree that, that they, they're doing the right thing. I don't think it would be in our best interest to set aside a block of money at this point, in our budget. I would like to see how they maneuver. They have this, and they need to make sure they keep this in the back of their mind and do everything they can to absorb this. Uh, and if during the year, um, you know, conversely, if something doesn't happen, but during the year, if they can find that they can make this up in some other areas, I think it would be good, and by November, we wouldn't have to do anything at that point.
I think the only problem with that is if they feel as though cutting hours is the only way they're gonna save the money, you could have a lack of service throughout the summertime, which is their busiest time.
So, cut hours in the, in the winter.
Right, right. I, I, I think right now, it's just.
Run normal till you get to the fall.
I'm okay that it's, right, right. In the end of October, you know, reassess and see, see how they're doing. And then, if there's an issue, come back.
I would hope it would be before November, though. I think that's.
Yeah, but by then, you've got a pretty good handle. Like, we used to, uh, you know, in the Budget Committee, we used to, when we got these requests, we used to tell them, okay, we understand, come back and see us in November, and we'll, we'll have a really good handle at the end of October, beginning of November, where the budgets lie. And certainly, that's nineteen hundred dollars out of a, you know, five million dollar budget. It's something that.
What's the total budget of the library?
Two hundred and twenty, two hundred and thirty thousand.
No, I'm talking townwide.
Two hundred and thirty thousand, something like that?
I think that's, yeah, let me pull up.
It's roughly around that, I think.
Yeah, I mean, and, you know, to be, you know, I mean, I think that's, that's the question that, that, you know, looking at here, is that, um, it's, it is easier for us to contemplate covering that kind of number in a five million dollar budget.
Right.
And in their budget, it is a little trickier to do that when their, um, their budget from the town is just, is just over two hundred thousand dollars. There is no sort of space, there's no overtime, there's no space.
Just to make you aware, I calculated on two hundred and twenty, so I didn't bother redoing the math. If you wanna call it two hundred, I'll recalculate it if you want. But that's less than one percent.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I don't think this board needs to take any action. If they, they should be able to fit one percent variance in their budget. If, if their budget is within one percent, God, God love them, but I, I just don't see that they can manage a budget to, to that level. And I'm not saying that they have a problem managing budgets. I'm just saying, things change over the course of the year. And if, if they get into a big problem, then fine, the town stands here to help them.
Yeah.
But nineteen hundred and fifteen dollars, it's point eight percent.
All right, so in the interest of moving forward, is there any motion?
Move to receive and file. Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Lemire, seconded by Mr. Byron. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? All those abstain? Motion carries, five zero zero. We will now move on. Old business. COP-Sync.
COP-Sync, there was a question last time about connectivity between this program and, um, our other programs in the vehicle. Um, John's clarified that his question regarding connectivity has been answered, and he's okay with us proceeding. Get to refresh your memory, this was the school-based notification.
Any movement from the SOU?
Not, not at this point, but, you know, we haven't chased it the past two weeks either, so. Um, you recall that this is sort of a state emergency management performance grant. So, um, it requires a significant number of motions and paperwork for the arguably small amount of money that this is, that we're receiving. Um, so I've put in the notes here, the two motions I'm looking for. One is going to be to vote to accept the terms of the grant, and then the second is to authorize Police Chief Joseph O'Brien to sign the grant agreement and all subsequent related documents on behalf of the town.
So, John, the information you're looking to find out at this meeting, good on.
Yep.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that the Board of Selectmen accepts the terms of the emergency management or performance grant as presented in the amount of four hundred and eighty dollars for the purchase of COP-Sync School Emergency Notification System, and the board acknowledges that the total cost of this project will be nine hundred and sixty dollars, for which the town will be responsible for a fifty percent match of four hundred and eighty dollars.
Seconded. I have a motion, and I have a second. Do I have any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call this to a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All those abstain? Motion carries, five zero zero. So, now we need to sign and print?
You need to do none of the above.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that the, that the Board of Selectmen authorizes Police Chief Joseph O'Brien to sign the grant agreement and all subsequent related documents related to this grant on behalf of the town of Leechfield.
Seconded. Motion and a second, any discussion? I was, I was so in tune with finding it, because I knew I saw it earlier.
You're right, exactly, yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, no discussion, we'll call this to a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? All those abstain? Motion carries, five zero zero.
It's configured for you guys, you can also authorize, and this is such small potatoes, it's so much easier just to have staff deal with the, all the paperwork on this.
Yep.
Good.
Next, pipeline?
Pipeline, um, and the ongoing pipeline issues. Um, the Municipal Pipeline Coalition, uh, which is the collection of, um, towns, uh, we have about twelve to fifteen towns now that are formally organized. We have administrators, managers, selectmen, uh, representing towns impacted by the pipeline. Um, we have shared, um, we've, uh, we've hired shared council to represent all of the towns' interests in that. Uh, I've been sharing some of that information all along, so this really isn't breaking news, other than we all finally finalized that agreement. Uh, I believe that was last Monday. Um, and, um, so that, so council will be advising all of the towns on the best steps going forwards. Uh, the next sort of public steps we expect to see are the FERC scoping meetings, and to try to get that right information in place. He's also been making sure we're aware of what's happening. We may actually, as a municipal, a group of municipalities, be able to become involved in, uh, Public Utility Commission's review. Um, if there are some pretty significant questions that they've raised about Liberty Utilities' use of this proposed pipeline. Um, and, um, this, the other thing is, since he is also based in Massachusetts and working with groups there, it's kinda keeping track of what's happening on both sides of the border, because obviously, this comes from Massachusetts to here. Um, probably the most notable thing, today, actually, fifteen coalition members, um, met with Senator Shaheen at her office. Several of our congressional staffers have, the, um, members of Congress have had staffers heavily involved, both in our meetings and the NRPC meetings, um, with their energy facilities group. So, um, Senator Shaheen met with us today. Um, our members divided up and discussed some of the concerns listed below. We talked about, explained the coalition, the coalition's, uh, position about this, concerns about environmental impact, issues related specifically to the compressor station in Temple, New Ipswich. Uh, eminent domain, uh, much of this goes across public, um, land. Uh, limited, if any, benefit to New Hampshire, the alternatives of Spectra and Portland Natural Gas Alternatives. Uh, Senator was really engaged with the substance of our comments. We were there for about an hour, uh, took a lot of notes, asked some, uh, good clarifying follow-up questions. Her comments to us basically were sort of centered around, as it's been presented so far, it appears that some of these other alternatives are better options. She and her staff are looking for the most constructive way to support all of our communities through that regulatory process. She pointed out that she was involved with two pipeline projects in New Hampshire when she was governor, so there is sort of at least a reference point for her, seeing the process. Um, she expressed some concern about messaging and information from FERC, contrasting what seems to be happening now, as opposed to what happened several years ago when she was in the similar processes governor. Uh, notably, um, at the moment, there's a little bit of concern about how much or how little FERC plans to, um, involve the comment of the State Site Evaluation Committee. Um, her other observation to us was she's weighing the best place for her involvement relative to making sure the process takes care of the right issues. Um, so, you know, she's, you know, which is basically the graceful way of saying, she's not gonna say, I'm for it or against it, because then your ability to intervene in other parts of the regulatory process is somewhat held back by you're on one side or the other. Um, overall, very constructive meeting. Uh, coalition members were all very pleased, and Senator was very engaged with us. So, we'll continue to see where it goes, but I think this is one of the steps now that is notable, because we're working with other towns formally as a group of towns.
Cool.
Yeah, so, I'm very pleased with how that direction is going.
Anybody have any other questions, comments about the pipeline? Let's move on to the union contract.
Oh, union contract, yes. Um, the union has, um, reached out and said that they are interested in moving forward on negotiating contract, um, you know, potentially, if we can work together on recognizing, uh, my relatively abbreviated timetable. So, I'm not sure, I think we left it a little bit open-ended when we were taking assignments. Um, Brent, were you the, uh, you were gonna be the primary contact for the board on that?
Or was I secondary to Frank, like last time?
No, I think you were primary this time.
I think you were.
I think you were.
Frank, Frank was, had committed concerns, if I remember right.
Yeah. I have concerns about the union negotiation, I think it's.
Yeah, I thought you was an issue on time, you were busy, busy, so.
Fine.
You're good with that? Okay, so, um, we may work on a somewhat faster timetable on that then. Um, my understanding from union rep is that they're, they're meeting tomorrow to go over any issues they may have as a membership group, so we should be able to start scheduling something the next week or two.
Who are their representatives?
Uh, let's see, who do we have? Uh, we have Corporal Savage, Sergeant Sergeant, and, um, I think they're going to bring Officer Ivis in as sort of a new face to.
Well, I got an idea. Tell them if they wanna do it real quick, change the date on the existing agreement, we'll sell it like that. Not a problem.
We may not wanna be quite that streamlined.
Yeah.
But, then I, I'll, I'll connect with you with schedule and to make sure you and I have similar concept of points. Okay?
I also have provided, um, Mr. Hope with some contract, um, information from the county level, process that was used. So, there may be some information that you could excerpt out of that that may be applicable to Leechfield. Uh, Jason has made copies of those, and he has them in his possession.
Yep, there were some, you know, at the very base, some things to not reinvent the wheel on how to deal with some of the upcoming health insurance changes and issues.
Mm-hmm.
As well as it gives us another point of reference for, um, wage items as well.
Do we have an opportunity to set a meeting in non-public? Well, it wouldn't be a meeting, but it would be a gathering of selectmen under the RLSAs to discuss what our position going forward would be as a board, and what we'd like to see?
Uh, yes, um, you can certainly do that. Um, I recall raising some of that issue previously at some point. You'll notice I've shared, you know, one of the outcomes there was looking for some comparative numbers.
Okay, would that be most beneficial after Brent and Jason have met with them? To see what they're looking for?
No, I.
Or before?
I think what their expectation is going to be is that both sides come with.
Right.
A listing of their expectations.
I think the sooner the better for the board, in case, you know, because at that point, then, Steve, it becomes reactionary instead of, um, you know, if the board members have some clear impressions as to the direction they want the team to go, I think the earlier the better.
When I go back, I think in early, um, in May, early May, uh, we had an initial conversation about this. I know I shared some of the issues that, from more of an administrative piece, but that I had noted, and I think that's where you had, um, an outcome of asking the, uh, Chief to reach out to his colleagues in so-called, you know, competitive towns for their current contracts and rates of pay. So.
Okay, um, so if they're saying the next week or two, should we try to get together very soon? Next Monday, someday during the week?
It's fine with me.
Mm-hmm. What's everybody thinking?
What's what?
Can people do next Monday?
Twenty-ninth.
Yeah. Can Jason do next Monday?
I don't know.
I don't know whether even Jason needs to be there, to be honest with you.
Okay.
It's a work, it's a non-public loss, right?
It's not even a meeting, it's, it's, it's for, under the RLSAs, because we're discussing negotiating strategy, it's a non-meeting.
How does that work, as far as minutes and things like that go?
No need for minutes.
No need for minutes?
It, it doesn't trigger, it doesn't trigger the threshold of a meeting. It is somehow, it is excluded from the definition of meeting.
But otherwise, we can't talk or discuss about anything that we have a decisioning power over unless we're in a meeting.
Right.
It's kinda contradictory, isn't it?
No.
Yes and no, how's that? How's that? How's that sound?
That makes perfect sense.
Does that, does that work? Yeah, I mean, the, 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 the way, the way the RSA reads it, there are certain things called meetings, but there are tests for meetings, and there are things that are excluded from that, and negotiation is excluded. So, it's not a non-public like we opened here, where there was a specific topic. It just is, well, it doesn't even register on the radar screen.
But you're only, you're only authorized to discuss negotiating strategy.
Right, right. Do people want to do next Monday? If there's another day that works, throw it out there, I mean.
Monday works, Monday's fine. Monday's a good day.
Next Monday? Six o'clock? Does that work for everybody?
Yeah, six o'clock Monday.
Okay, then we will discuss contract negotiations next Monday, six o'clock, right here. Okay? Brent, they work for you?
Yeah.
Okay. Do we have anything else on this? Is that it?
That's it, I just needed to get something scheduled and moving, so you've taken care of that.
Okay, now we have wage plan, longevity clarification.
So, yeah, um, you voted on, um, the rollout a little while ago, and I've started getting people to sign off on all the paperwork, bringing them up to speed on where they are, what the board's intention was, what the plan looks like. Um, and I realized that, uh... And I realized that in terms of the longevity payment section, I've run my calculations assuming that, as with most things, they would be prorated accordingly for part-time Although I then realized that I copied the entirety of the language from the policy, my language fails to make that clear in the policy. So I wanted to confirm that your intention is that we'll prorate it based on average hours worked for part-time employees. So if you work 30 hours, you get three-quarters of that fixed payment.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that the Board of Selectmen hereby clarifies the longevity bonus, or whatever you want to call it, the bonus, as to being prorated for part-time employees.
Seconded. I have a motion by Mr. Byron, seconded by Mr. Lemire. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call this to a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All those abstain? Motion carries, 5-0-0. Anything else, Jason?
Only, the only thing to note on that is that I will work on getting the revised, overall revised appendix there. That includes that clarification, as well as revised transition. You know, the way that we wrote that now, we expected making that transition in beginning of January of 2014. So I'd like to sort of set that future plan in place. So, you know, your next administrator has a roadmap to work on instead of being left a, here's a horribly outdated document.
Sounds good.
So you'll see that at a future meeting.
Anything else, Jason?
Um, I think that's all I have, unless there are questions. Just real quickly, under the informational items, met with CMA engineers this week on the wastewater study, provided a couple notes there. Really good opportunities looking at connecting with Manchester, as well as opportunities with Merrimack. They're going to be sending me a draft report by the end of July for me to circulate for review, and they'd like to be making a presentation in August. So again, we're still on timetable for that, as expected.
Next, we have other items. Is this where the water meeting thing was going to come in? Kevin?
Yeah, I guess. So that meeting was more of a learning curve for me, obviously, just getting into it. I know Frank's been involved with it. Jason could probably touch a little bit on it, as far as, there's some things that I learned as far as, you know, what the school uses for water, and where they should be, where they shouldn't be. Talked about possibly meeting with Hudson to discuss. I know, I don't know if you ever got a date for that.
They haven't followed up with the date. And they, yeah, I mean, if you want me to jump in a little bit? Yeah, they, they were kind of doing a little bit of preliminary information gathering with, with the likely parties, those being Leechfield, Hudson, and Pennechuck Water. They were concerned overall about measurement of use of water for both our fields and for the rec, or the schools' fields. We're in the process of putting some sort of measurement system in for that, because, you know, they're ultimately looking at our, our uses, drawing down the Lake Darapon to an unacceptable level. I think, I guess it was reassuring to some degree, and I'm not sure, you know, if you pulled this too, but I guess, I, I was very concerned that the way some of their conversations were going, that we would be getting a directive, "No, you can't water your fields."
Yeah.
And we'd be looking at a situation of having to take fields out of circulation because we couldn't maintain them. I mean, I did hear back from them that that was not the direction that they thought this would go.
Right.
Would, if they were to do that, would they tell people out to water their lawns that are on wells? They're all drawing from the same aquifer.
Yeah. Again, definitely a learning curve for me, you know, this stuff.
It was unclear what their prescriptive was at this point. I mean, basically, they wanted to get that sort of initial conversation, get sort of an initial snapshot, and their first thought is scheduling, and they had suggested later, I thought they suggested this month or early next month, we're running out of this month, of convening the main town and Pennechuck groups together to have a conversation, just to where, what else may be possible. And they had talked with Pennechuck, I mean, we've talked here before too, about the possibility of Pennechuck running additional service under the Merrimack to add more capacity here anyway, which then could help dial back some of that draw. So very preliminary, no sort of action at this point.
Good to know information.
Excellent. Anything else on that? So now we'll go into selectmen reports. Do any selectmen have anything to report?
Is a budget committee meeting this week, Thursday? And I believe that that will be a meeting. I don't think we have one in July, so I think it's the next meeting after that will be August timeframe, so. Anyways, just to let you be, to make you aware, also, I just wanted to make people aware that on the Fourth of July, the London Dairy Fish and Game Club has sent out a notice to some of their members that anyone who wants to come to the club to light off fireworks may do so until 10:00 P.M. So just to make you aware, and I don't know, you may want to let the chief know that if he gets complaints or whatever from people who are adjacent to the club, that's what's going on.
Good to know.
Steve, you'll hear it.
I'll hear it, I'll see it. Actually, no, I won't, I won't be home. Anybody else with a selectman report? I attended, we still don't have a name for it, but the meeting about the land down on Page and Cutler. The Chavinos have proposed to turn into fields or whatever, and it's like a reclamation project that they're trying to get clarification for. So in the discussion, what's been going around is some people have been asking and trying to figure out what the needs are of the town for future recreational use, and maybe what they would like to see happen with the property. And the Recreation Commission has now weighed in and said that...
You're welcome.
And it, and it's still at the preliminary stage of the Recreation, Recreation Commission, because they're still going to discuss it next week, which I will not be able to attend that meeting. I told John if I could, I would, but I can't. So please just relay that I won't be there. One of the biggest concerns that they have is baseball fields. So tentatively, right now, the talk is two baseball fields, probably a couple more grass fields, which would be like lacrosse or soccer-type fields. And the biggest feedback, other than walking trails, would be a building. So I wanted to make sure that I brought that back to this board, so this board is well in tune with the fact that, that is a concept that is being discussed at this time. The building size is actually being determined right now, and that's what the Recreation Commission's going to talk about on Tuesday, about what would need to fit in the building and what size it would need to be, but, I mean, pretty large. Pretty large. So just so you know, that's where it's going right now.
Where would they get the funding?
Well, the Chavinos plan on excavating the property and taking the sand out of the property, and the sale of the sand and the trucking costs and everything else like that, they would basically just form a bucket, and once the land was paid off, when the bucket was full of whatever they can do, they will start using that money to reclaim the property piece by piece into what the town is asking for in return.
So they would build and then pass it over to them?
Yes. Now, with the request of something like a building, there is a possibility that there wouldn't be enough money from excavating sand, and it would be entertained to possibly sell off some for housing. So it's still in the real early stages, I just wanted to bring that back to everybody so they know exactly what's going on. So if the questions start arising, again, still very early. But that's the road that's being traveled at this time, and that was last Wednesday, and we are meeting again on July 15th. So public is welcome, if public would like to attend as well. I would welcome anybody, any board, any representative, any member, come down, have this discussion, because we're still on a working plan here, so.
I'm somewhat puzzled why you would take all your money, put it into a building if what they've identified as the biggest need is fields. It just doesn't make sense to me, but that's...
No, 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 it would be all.
It'd be fields inside the building, right?
It would be all.
Fields inside the building.
It would be fields, it'd be a building, it'd be walking trails, it would be the whole, basically what...
Whatever, I, I wanted to get a debate about, I just wanted to just say it doesn't, it seems to me that it's, it's a, it's a hole you're going to throw a lot of money into and not come out of it with a lot.
Well, what's been asked originally was to specify the need, we'll see what the need is going to cost, and then if we need to take out, that's when it will be addressed.
So the only other thing that I would like to throw out there is a concept, would be Brickyard. We have a huge problem with parking.
That is, that's been, not to interrupt you, but that's been one of the biggest discussions when we were having this, is to build soccer fields to eliminate Brickyard.
What I'm suggesting is that if you're going to put in something or keep Brickyard functioning, keep Brickyard functioning maybe as a baseball field, so there's less people who would attend, for example, versus soccer, and switch those fields up to this new location. All I'm saying is if you can minimize the issue of parking, that would go a long way to making sure that everybody's happy and...
That, that was one of the discussions, was to just more or less eliminate the use of Brickyard. If another facility could be built and substituted, just so that...
They even talk about Kevin named Jeff, too.
The biggest problem would go away.
Well, one, one option would be to sell the Brickyard property if that's possible. I don't know if it's possible. And then use that money if they need, or if the citizens of the town want to authorize, put that building up there with that money.
Right. Well, I know that the other thing that was talked about was selling Jeff, and Jeff cannot be sold.
Right.
If Jeff isn't used in a recreational purpose, it has to be turned back to the original owner.
Yeah, I don't know about Brickyard.
But I don't know about Brickyard. Did we ever get an answer on that?
I think we're okay on Brickyard. I think Jeff was the one, of course, you know, the other thought on Jeff is, so it goes back to the original owner, you get two houses, you put up, you get property taxes from them. One of the other thoughts is if you transfer property like Brickyard and actually sell it, you, depending on what your plan ultimately is, either you could put the money towards that, or you can set up a trust fund to handle some of the ongoing maintenance costs of new facility as well.
All I'm saying is, see if we can get rid of the parking problem.
So, I mean, it was, it was a good meeting, there was a lot of discussion. One of the other things that was brought back was like a senior center slash type of place where groups could meet, instead of having like spaghetti suppers at the schools, they could be at a facility, and some of the talk ensued around that, and maybe if a new facility was built for sports, maybe talent could be converted, but again, that is out of the realm of that discussion, but it was all talked about. So input from people in the town would be great. That's all I got to say. Any other selectman reports? Hearing none?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn, do I have a second?
Second.
I was getting nervous here.
I was waiting for someone else to do it.
I have a motion and a second for adjourn. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed? All those abstain? Motion carries, 5-0-0. Thank you for watching, everyone. Meeting is now over at approximately 7:40. Yep, 7:40.
Our next meeting is what?
Our next meeting is, Jason, is it two weeks?
No, it's the second Tuesday in July, which is...
That's the next public meeting, right?
Right. Yes, well, the other one is not a meeting, July 13th. Your next, your next meeting here is July 13th.
All right, so tune in on our next meeting on July 13th, and we'll have some more riveting discussion. Have a good night.